Welcome everybody to this crime town hall, police town hall that we are having this evening. There are some ground rules. There will be no specific cases mentioned tonight. So if you have a question about anything that's going on, it has to be in a generality. It's not going to be a specific, we're not going to delve into that. We're going to stop that right there. We did have a very lengthy email that did go into specifics, so I will just read the last part of that question. We're not going to go into anything like that. I will be reading all of the questions, whether they are online or from here in the audience. I prefer to have the audience questions first because you guys showed up. So if you guys have a question, you can give it to Paula, or you could just come up and ring it to me. I will read the questions and this amazing panel we have up here will answer it for you as best they can. Some stuff is not in our jurisdiction. Anything in North LaHonta, in Rocky Ford, and stuff like that, that's not in our view to do anything about. And Mr. Maloff will go a little bit further in description with that. Let's all be respectful. I will not tolerate any bashing of the law enforcement that we have up here, or even the city attorney. So if you're upset at the city attorney as well, too, we won't go into that. They do a lot for this city. I want to say thank you to them for what they do for our city. You guys put your lives on the line for us every time you go out there, and we thank you for that. Quick mention of why this is so important is because in 2015, we tried to run a 1% for public safety. And I know recently it's become a trend to defund the police. And that's the furthest from the truth of what we wanted to do in LaHonta. We want to fund the police. We want to find more ways to get you guys more resources. Chief and deputy chief here have some numbers of what surrounding police forces are doing, and we're well below that. And the world is not getting any safer by us having less police officers. So we need to find a way to get them funded, to get our city funded, to where we're not cutting anything. The last thing I ever want to do is cut public safety. Okay? I've said that over and over again. But the math has to work, okay? That's why people say, "Well, why are you doing this? Why are you doing the pool, the golf course?" You want me to cut these guys? Because that's not going to make it any better. And they're already having a tough enough time with the way our state laws are, okay? So if you guys have any questions, like I said, write them down. I will be reading them. I'm going to start by letting them pass the mic around, just do a brief introduction. Your name, what you do for us, and anything you guys want to talk about briefly. Can you hear me? Scott Copley is my name. I'm the deputy chief for the police department. I've been here full-time since January. Is it on?
Who's that?
How about that? Is that better? Is this better? Can you hear that?
Yep.
Okay. Full-time since January, too. The chief brought me back after our deputy chief went over to the fire department. I come from a long history of law enforcement. I've been retired from the state patrol a couple of years ago. Just excited to be here, a part of this community, and it's been a good growth curve, learning curve for me in the last eight months to figure out the best way to serve our public here locally. And really, what I really love about this is the direct connection we have to our public and to each other. In larger agencies, you miss this sometimes. You don't get to see the direct results and the direct impact of your decisions and your things that you're doing. So excited to be here, glad to be a part of this. I'll get off my soapbox there for a second.
Phil Maloff, I'm the city attorney. Been city attorney for 35 years. When someone hands me a microphone, I'm thinking that I'm on American Idol. I'm not sure what I should be seeing here, but I don't tap dance. I could be a singer, I guess. In any event, LaHonta is my hometown. I went away, went to school, went to the army, came back. I like LaHonta. It's a wonderful place. I've always felt that if I was lying face down in the gutter, somebody walked by me in LaHonta, they'd pick me up and take me home. And that's just a huge part of the community spirit that I think exists here. It's always a pleasure and a privilege to work with the city police department.
Hi, I'm Jessica Madrid. I'm the communications director. I've been with the city now six years. I did originally start in LaHonta, and I did leave for six years to be with the state patrol, but I've always come back. This is home. Born and raised, and I've been with public safety for a total of 16 years.
Is all right if I just talk like this? I really don't like to talk into these.
Take it over.
Can you hear me in the back?
Okay. All right. My name's Todd Quick. I was born and raised here in LaHonta, in the Shaw area. Worked at LaHonta livestock from the time I was 15 until I got into law enforcement. So I do have an agricultural background, too. The reason I got into law enforcement was Bob Benz here. He let me know about the reserves, and it was a way I could help the community. And once I started doing that, I figured out, you know, that's what I want to do for a career. So I started as a reserve in 1997, and then come on full-time in LaHonta in 2001. And then just kind of worked my way up from there. I enjoy the city, live in town, and I really want to see it thrive and make it a better place to live.
Thank you all for being here. Just real quick, whatever the question is, I'll let them all have first crack at it. If no one can answer it, then we have Dean here to clean up for us. Just so you guys know, when I first got sworn in and did all that, I had all these questions for Dean. And he was so, so great in making me this huge book of codes and where all the complaints go and who I need to talk to, because I just figured if it was a complaint, I got to give it to Dean. But this code book is very handy, but he knows it like the back of his hand. So if he gets in trouble, I'll just give this to him if he needs it. First question is the email we received. Like I said, it's a lengthy email, and it has a lot of specific issues in it. But what it comes down to is there's problems with some people and our homeless population that we have here in LaHonta. So she says, her question is, "What can be done to make law-abiding, tax-paying citizens feel safe in this community and to curb the problem with the homeless people being a threat to the community? From our understanding, the homeless people are a protected class, and nothing can be done. Who has made that designation and why?" Whoever wants to answer that first.
Let me try it. First of all, homelessness is not a protected class. No more than home full is a protected class. But regrettably, there's people within what generically is referred to as homelessness that operate on fringes, maybe illegal, sometimes operating with mental health disorders. And I think that a lot of people are grouped into that term homelessness when they really are suffering from either being law, ignoring types of individuals, or mentally ill individuals. It's compounded by the United States Supreme Court and other courts that have made determinations that expressions aren't necessarily illegal or unlawful conduct. So the fact that somebody to my right chooses to wear a god-awful dark blue uniform is not necessarily an indication of anything other than exercising his freedom of speech. And so much of the conduct that homeless people exhibit, as far as the courts are concerned, may be protected forms of speech. Now, where do you draw the line? We've got an individual in town that runs around and starts fires in the middle of the street so that he can light a cigarette. That's probably stretching it. He's homeless, we know that. He's, I've dealt with him many times, as these gentlemen have. He's not all there, perhaps, but he still is not necessarily operating in a circumstance where his conduct is such that he should be locked up. The Colorado legislature has decided that they're not going to fund prisoner impoundment for actions that are not truly violent. So what do you do with this individual? What does society do with this individual? Well, we try to keep him from starting fires. We try to reason with him on a rational basis. There are some statutes and city ordinances that may apply here, but it isn't a question of citing him for a violation. It's a question of how do we help him, or what do we do after he's been cited? And regrettably, mental health diagnoses are hard to come by, and even if there is a diagnosis of mental illness, what to do with him is very troublesome to lots of different people, and especially to agencies that are not even represented here. So when we're talking about homelessness, we are throwing a lot of things into a category which are not necessarily accurate. Somebody walking around with a shopping cart with all kinds of gobs of stuff in it that may be somewhat distasteful as far as I'm concerned, or someone else, isn't necessarily breaking the law. He might even be homeless. He might not have a place of permanent residence where the post office can deliver letters, but he still has an entitlement to be there. And the fact that he is either not necessarily as clean and kept as he should be, or that we think he should be, or that he's pushing around a cart with lots of his belongings, doesn't necessarily mean that he's intruded on the law. So homelessness is a hard designation. It's a cruel designation, but until we can figure out ways to help the mentally ill people and figure out ways to get people to conform more to the social norms that we think are normal, we're going to have this problem. There's certainly no justification for anyone, homeless or home full, breaking the law, trying to become violent, being violent, and so forth. Those things should not be characterized on the basis of homelessness or what have you. We've got lots of people that have a mainland address that still break the law. But homelessness is a category that seems to be a popular place to express our displeasure with how they dress and how they associate with the rest of the public. It's an ongoing problem. It's being discussed at all sorts of different levels, but nobody has a really good solution at this point.
So this isn't just a LaHonta issue?
No, it's all over the United States. It's everywhere. I'll take a look at San Francisco and Chicago, and on and on and on and on. Chicago, I think they said there were 600 people living in the bathrooms of O'Hara International Airport. We know that people living out on the streets and so forth. They are protected by the court system, and not in a direct way of protection, but the court system saying that we all have a right to occupy public spaces. The fact that we don't necessarily approve of the color of their tent isn't necessarily a reason that they should be removed from that public venue. So it's really difficult. Nobody has a good handle on it, and it's pervasive all throughout society. And since I have the microphone, I want to do a rendition of, anybody have any special requests here?
No.
When they hand a lawyer one of these things, I always think he's going to bust out and stonewall.
A follow-up for you, Dean. If someone was homeless, they're not protected, they're not a protected class. They have rights, just as every other citizen. That's what you're getting at, right? It's not that they have special rights being homeless. They just have rights as citizens that we all have. And we have to break a law in order for the police to get involved. Not just walking down the street is not breaking the law.
100% correct and an accurate statement.
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear for everyone, because I get that all the time. I'm an early bird. I get up around 4:00 a.m., go to the gym, stuff like that. And there's people, you know, "Hey, these people are walking down Third Street with a backpack." That's not a crime, you know? I'm sure they're probably, I can't say for sure, but I'm sure they have stuff in that backpack they shouldn't have, but just walking down the street is not a crime, right? So if you guys get a call like that, Scott or Todd, what is your guys' procedure on something like that?
So we'll, obviously, we'll respond to all of those calls. Anytime somebody calls for a service call, we'll handle it. It's going to be dependent on the situation. If you contact them, and it's a consensual contact, they're just literally walking down the street. Not a lot we're going to do at that point, other than to make sure they're healthy, they're safe, and send them on their way, or offer them a ride if it's cold, or those kind of things. But typically, disengage quickly with that contact if they're not doing anything that would be illegal, or they're not unsafe, meaning that they're not extremely impaired, or, you know, demonstrating some kind of a mental or medical condition. But there's not a lot that can be done at that point. They're within their rights to walk, if they're on the sidewalk walking illegally. If they're down the middle of the street, that's obviously an issue to talk to them about. But if they're just minding their business, moving on, there's not much we can do or should do about that, really. Back to the constitutional issue that they have protections under.
Okay. Now, let's say that there were some burglaries in the area. Were you, are you able to do anything at that point, or would someone still have to make that call and say, you know, "We saw this person with a description doing something"?
There, can you still hear me in the back? Okay. There has to be a nexus between that person and the theft, or the robbery, or the trespass, or whatever that may be. There has to be some tie, just because that person's walking down the street. May give you a reason to contact them, to make sure they're not tied to it, but that you have to quickly develop a reason to continue to detain that person, even though you know that you're having break-ins or thefts in that area. But just because they're there and the crimes are happening around them, doesn't make that person guilty at that point. Has to be more information and more detail produced before we can maybe not have to punish them.
Can that be an anonymous call, or does someone have to sign a complaint? How does that work?
Be anonymous.
I'd like to add in a part, too. The facts that they give us over the phone are very important. What is that person doing? Are they walking up and testing doorknobs, you know, on cars? Are they walking through your property with trespassing, things like that? So be really descriptive on what they're doing. That gives us more reason to contact them and find out what's going on.
That's just one I get a lot. Glad to follow up on that one. And I know for a fact that you guys can't just stop people from walking down the street, you know, whether it's 2:00 in the morning, or whatever it is, you know, they can just do that. So, new question. What would it take to get the PD fully staffed?
I'll start on that one, too. Did any of you get the opportunity to pick up the paper out there where we compared to Trinidad and Lamar? As you see, our current staffing level is 16, which includes a chief, deputy chief. We have a lot of administrative duties, plus we have to go work the streets and stuff at times. We have four sergeants, and we have four shifts. So each sergeant runs a shift, as well as takes calls in rotation. So they're not like sergeants at big cities that just supervise their people. So they have to take calls and supervise their people. We don't have any detectives currently, and we have six patrol officers. So what that equates to is that allows us three people, a sergeant and two patrol officers on two shifts, and we usually pick that as the two-day shifts, because those are our busiest times. And then a sergeant and patrol officer on the night shifts. And we have one code enforcement. We'll talk about code probably during a little while. We talked about this in the citizens academy the other night. And what we would say would probably be a minimum staffing level for us would be around 19 or 20. That would allow us four people on each shift, sergeant and three officers. That also helps with call-offs, court, you know, the officers have to go to court. Sometimes they work at night, have to work the next morning, so that we can't allow them to work the next night. Helps with those type of things. A detective would be awesome. That would help with follow-up, you know, cases that an officer can't get back to, either because of time off, or just needs somebody to contact somebody at a different time than they work. So detectives would be great. Code enforcement, we currently have one code enforcement. At times, we have two. And the second one is more or less a peace officer in training. We'll be starting one next week. And what they do is work code until the next academy, and then we send them to the academy. Talking to Lamar, you know, they run two full-time civilian code officers, and the chief is going to be asking for three. And I would say we could probably be well with that. You'll notice, two, all of them have admins. We have zero. Jessica is our dispatch supervisor, so she's in charge of the communications center, making sure that they're doing things right for their records, for the police department, for the fire department, and she helps us out with admin. You want to just tell us what you do? I mean, she does so much. But, so she does four or five different jobs. Go ahead.
So chief asked me today what I did for the communications in the police department. And actually, I had to sit down and think about it and make a list, because it's just kind of, it's what I do. It's part of my job. So my list includes communications director, evidence custodian, records clerk, state reporting neighbors, e-discovery clerk, admin to the chief, CPR instructor, and I work closely with code enforcement in the city clerk's office to make sure municipal code violations are handled.
Quite a few things where other agencies have separate people for them. So we're combining jobs to try to get this done for the community.
We're doing more with less.
More with less.
Because we're forced to.
And that's the biggest thing. If you'll look at Trinidad, they have four full-time detectives. Of course, they do have the marijuana mode, which helps them. And that's kind of my comparison. If there's any questions.
I do have a follow-up question on that. For code enforcement, this is one that I get hit on almost all the time, okay? Now, can you explain, if I have one code enforcement out there, okay, and he's doing his, you know, scope, and a call comes in for a dog, what happens? What takes priority?
He immediately has to stop what he's doing, go pick up that dog, and then he has to take it out to the animal shelter, which is in the industrial park. Normal, under normal business, that takes, you know, up to a half an hour anyway. Well, now we have the traffic lights slowing things down. And it's kind of hard for one code officer, you see all the different things they're in charge of, stray animals, junk vehicles, weed complaints, trash complaints, you know, just anything within that code. Thank goodness, the engineering takes care of some of the building-type stuff. We don't have to do that. But you have one guy, and today he decides he's going to do weeds, and he gets, you know, three weeds into it, and all of a sudden, he's got two dogs to go pick up, or a dog bite, things like that. So that's kind of why the Lamar chief said, you know, he would like to have three. And Trinidad talks about having just an animal patrol officer and then code officer separate.
Now, with code, all these codes appear. Someone gets a weed ticket, right? That's out of your guys' control now at that point. Is that correct?
Yes.
That goes where?
That goes, well, I'll let Jessica, because it goes to Jessica, and she puts it through the city process. But before you say that, if I can add something in. Before, about two months ago, we had a process of everybody got a warning. And we finally saw that, you know, that's just not working. Nobody's taking it serious. So now, when there's a weed violation, trash violation, they write a ticket right then and there. Then it starts the process of sending it through the 15 days and everything, which many code requires. Mr. Maloff, I want to talk about that. We've noticed, since we've been writing tickets, they'll go back to do another one in the same neighborhood, and they're cleaned up. So it seems to be working. One of our biggest issues, though, is property owners that do not live in the city, and banks. You know, they're not keeping track of the properties they have. And we will, the code officer asked me who to issue the ticket to at the bank, and I said, "Find out who's in charge of the property and issue it to them." What we're doing for out-of-town property owners, we're trying to get a hold of them, making three attempts to get a hold of them. And if we can't, then we get them, give them a warrant for them. So they'll get stopped. If they don't get stopped in LaHonta, it really doesn't do a whole lot, because it's not extraditable, or they can't be arrested and brought to us. But it does at least put out a warrant, letting them know that we're taking it serious.
That's even.
All of this takes time. So this code officer is doing all of these things at the same time. Another point for this, after hours, our code officer typically works business hours, 8:00 to 5:00 during the week. Our regular street officers, if we have a code complaint or a dog complaint, they have to stop what they're doing and go take care of the call, handle the dog bites, the vicious animals. So that all pulls away from their regular, normal duty of patrolling the streets. And then the other officers on shift, including the sergeant, have to now fill the gap for them until they can get cleared from that same process, which takes them also more time, because they've got to come get the code truck, go to the call, take it to the shelter, come back. So they could be tied up for 30, 45 minutes on just a normal, routine dog call. And that frequently happens in the evening and night. Dogs, we can't train them to just run around during the day. We're having trouble, but we're working on it. That's another issue that just starts to pull away time and resources away from other more important things in the city.
I'd like to comment a little bit on issues related to dogs, and trash, and rubbish, and things of that nature, which all fall into the category of code enforcement. We have, obviously, codes that say that dogs need to be vaccinated, registered, and so forth. Going to find a dog that the owner has not vaccinated the dog, they get a citation that come through the court process. The court has to make a decision, either at my level or through Judge Manley, as to whether these people can pay the fine and still get their dog vaccinated, what the interest of the city is with regard to that kind of an issue. More times than not, we'll waive a fine if they'll go and get the dog vaccinated, because that's the true issue for the city, is we don't want diseased dogs running around biting people. So to some extent, there's a, what I consider to be a creative view of what to do with citizens that don't get their dogs vaccinated. I believe it's more important to have that dog vaccinated to protect me, my family, my next-door neighbor, than it is necessarily to extract a fine. One of the hot items this last year has been rubbish, weeds, junk that are collecting in front yards, backyards, side yards, everywhere you can imagine. And I can tell you that we've been, we, the city, have been working hard to try to find solutions to that. It's really troublesome, because one man's treasure is another man's trash, and one man's trash is another man's treasure. So things don't necessarily look aesthetically pleasing. Does that mean that they should, or are violating one of our codes with regard to the collection of rubbish and so forth? And the answer, regrettably, is aesthetic concerns are not a basis for law enforcement to act. So just because something, somebody paints something that's terribly ugly, colored paint, and they paint it four different colors, looking terrible, that isn't necessarily a reason for law enforcement to become involved. We have citizens that use their front yard as junkyards. They collect everything that they can possibly find, and they just stack it in the front yard. The neighbors are angry about it, maybe rightfully so. They keep their yards clean and orderly. But we've got a homeowner that wants to stack things in his front yard. The balance of whether that is a violation of a city code is a difficult balance to try to figure out. And homeowner has the right to use their front yard any way they want to. We have viewpoints of constitutional protections as to that. But when does it cross the line and become dangerous? Is it when their little kids can crawl into refrigerators and get hurt? Is it when rats start to accumulate, and we have diseased rats running around? When does trash, or unsightly accumulations, become something that needs to be addressed by the city, municipal code enforcement? Very, very difficult questions. And the answer is, one size doesn't fit all. So we struggle with that. Try to, I think, as a matter of policy, try to deal with people as adults, and try to approach them and say, "Look, your front yard is really just very difficult for your neighbors. They're unhappy with it. What can you do about it?" We have some success with that. We have a lot of non-success with people that just don't care. And when I say people don't care, is that a violation of the law, or is that someone using their property rights as they're entitled to do? Someone drives by my house, and they don't like what I've done in the front yard, have I violated the law? So we're constantly struggling with that. And to be very candid, that is a thankless job for the police department, for the code enforcement officer, because there aren't good, clear, clean answers to what goes on. It's easy to see somebody speeding and say they violated that law. It's very difficult to deal with trash, rubbish, when is it trash and when is it treasure?
Anything else you guys want to add on that?
I would add. We've had a few that I know of, that the city's actually went in and cleaned up, and then the people just start putting stuff back right away. And from, I'm not an expert on mental health, but from watching orders and stuff like that, they believe everything they got is a valuable piece of something, when, like Dean said to us, it may be trash. So that's one of the disappointing, or I don't know, disheartening things. We get them cleaned up, looks good, and within a week, they're already hauling stuff back in.
And then to the public that doesn't see them ever cleaned up, it looks like you guys never told them anything, right? Me and the deputy chief were having a discussion earlier, Dean, about, is it still okay to have, some call it useful public service, some call it community service? What is the law in Colorado on that now?
Gosh. The insurance companies have pretty much put an end to useful public service. Useful public service was a sentencing alternative, used a lot. We used it a lot in this municipality when someone couldn't afford a fine, and when incarceration was not an option. Or when we were dealing with kids, not kids, young adults that maybe had a strong backing, could help wash fire trucks, dust library books, things like that. It was a very attention-getting kind of proposition, and it worked real well. But insurance companies have said, "We don't want to insure municipalities if these guys get hurt doing this useful public service." So unless you're willing to, either the town or the municipality are willing to bear the risk... So unless you're willing to, you, the town or the municipality, willing to bear the risk, pay for whatever is going to happen, uh, we're not going to promote, we, the insurance companies, not going to promote and protect useful public service. That's happened at the state level, it's happened at the local level. So, maybe out of happenstance and not necessarily designed, useful public service is not much of a sentencing alternative. It's very hard to say, this young man can go dust library books and feel confident that he wouldn't get hurt. Sure could get hurt. And they deserve to ha- be protected, uh, if they are hurt. But we're finding it very, very difficult to find any insurance company that will protect the town, that will protect the individual.
Is there, uh, is there any kind of an alternative to this? Because we, we know, we see effectively how well that worked across our state, across the country. But is there any kind of a, um, an alternative to that, that, besides just fines and penalties? And, and ultimately warrants that, that maybe we kick up to our community to decide, is there a stopgap in this that we can find that would be a solution?
Well, other than lining people up in front of a firing squad, it's, it's difficult. But one of the things that we've been doing lately in municipal court, and it's actually pretty, pretty amusing, is, is that for young teenagers, they get in trouble, they're fighting on school grounds or they're doing this or doing that. And I've been requiring them to go to the library, check out a book and write a book report. I had a guy in just last Thursday, he brought his mother and she said, that was the worst punishment I could come up with. Uh, he wrote a pretty decent book report and he actually did read the book. But we're trying to find ways to, uh, get young adults, uh, get their attention. It's a little harder when we're dealing with adult, adults that have other responsibilities. But we're looking for ways and trying to find innovative ways to get people to understand that evolvement of the law is simply not an allowable thing in our society.
If you want to find a way not to do something, get lawyers involved. Just kidding, Dean. So, so useful public service is pretty much off the table unless we're gonna pay huge insurance rates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, if they really don't have the money to do that, where does that leave us? Do we just dismiss those? How does that, how does that work out ultimately?
Well, there's, there's different levels of sentencing alternatives. And Judge Manley, on the local level, has to try to find ways. Obvious fines, making someone pay money, that's certainly a sentencing alternative. Speeding tickets that accumulate points on your license, that's another way. Useful public service used to be really a, uh, a great way of getting attention, not so much now. Incarceration is almost a nonexistent alternative now at this level, at the municipal court level. It's not because Judge Manley is afraid to incarcerate. It's not because some people don't deserve to be incarcerated. But the legislature, it has been very conservative in their funding of jails and their, their allowance of, uh, of people to be incarcerated for non-violent offenses. Uh, it used to be that the penitentiaries, the jails and so forth, were filled with drug violators. People that are selling or using drugs, illegal drugs. That's a thing of the past. And that's not a function of this police department or this municipal court being unwilling to try to protect its citizens. It's a function of the legislature hasn't funded, uh, more jails or funded the opportunity to incarcerate people that break the law for what is generally referred to as white collar crime. So it's almost a predictable event when someone gets arrested and they, uh, go through the jail set, system and then they plead guilty or are found guilty. It's almost predictable what the district court judge, or municipal court judge is gonna do with regard to sentencing. Because based on the crime, there's just very, very few alternatives available. So you see a lot of probation, you see a lot of trying to, uh, keep an eye on people and, and, I don't want to say force, but require them to walk the straight and narrow. So that's becoming more and more of the, the popular mode here is to keep an eye on people through probation departments if that's available.
Okay, thank you. Uh, where does shoplifting and theft fall on your crime? I'm guessing like, is that a code? What, what would you guys call it? I don't know how to think that's what they're trying to ask.
Really just theft.
Just theft?
Yeah.
And then the value of the theft, right?
So is there a point where they get arrested for shop? How does that work? What does that process look like? Uh, you get a call at Walmart for someone shoplifting, what does that look like?
So, unless you can hear me, I'll just call out if you can hear me back there. I always have to stand up when I talk. I don't know why, I can't sit, but, um, so we have a dilemma with, uh, shoplifting at Walmart specifically. They're one of our larger volume retailers. Uh, we'll have anywhere from a dollar fifty, I think we had a dollar seventy-five case that they filed with us that somebody shoplifted, um, up to, you know, hundreds of dollars walking out the back door. TVs missing, things like that. So it really just depends on the value and then the probability of that. Um, a lot of times, we're picking up cases after the fact off of their surveillance cameras. It's, it's not as common to have their, their, uh, prevention staff actually watching somebody and engage them and have an officer, uh, right there to be able to apprehend a suspect immediately. Did I move out of your frame? Um, so it, it causes a little grief. Typically what happens with Walmart cases, we load up ten or fifteen or twenty cases. An officer will show up for one and they'll hand thirty cases to the officer. It can range anywhere from that dollar seventy-five to three hundred dollars worth of theft. And you have to go through every one of those to determine whether the suspect is, is, uh, enough surveillance camera to actually prove who the person is? Can you charge the person and then prosecute them through the system? And then what's the value of the things they stole? A lot of what we're finding from specifically Walmart is the self-checkout, it's mis-scanning items coming through. And so they may buy a hundred dollars worth of product, but they miscan three items and that's becoming a theft shoplifting case for us. All of that equates into a workload for officers. So again, you have the one case you go for, they hand you thirty cases and now your officer is trying to weed through those. We've worked, uh, really well with Walmart in the last several months, I would say the last four months, trying to streamline this process. So they're a little bit more diligent in the cases they send to us. They're trying to look for the higher dollar, higher target value cases that they can prove. And they've done a great job of trying to help us minimize that workload. But the shoplifting you all see every time you go to Walmart, they're, they're having to take their own prevention steps. Because shoplifting out there has become a, a bigger issue for them and their retail prevention. Um, and our ability to prosecute and identify suspects, um, coupled with that has become some of the issue we see. So it really depends, it is theft, depends on the category. Trying to get back to your question.
So, so Dean, does that fall under the, uh, type of thing that you can't go to jail for, for theft? Or how does that work?
You can be incarcerated for shoplifting, but there's so much more to it than that. You know, anybody that shoplifts at Walmart must be crazy. Because Walmart is very aggressive about defending its, its property and trying to catch shoplifters. They, they're on it all the time. But there is also other things besides going to jail that people, agencies, entities like Walmart pursue. One of the things, they can send a letter to a miscreant and say, you're no longer, uh, allowed to be on the property. And if we catch you on the property, we're going to call the police and ask that trespassing charges be brought against you. And that's pretty, pretty significant. It's different than shoplifting. Shoplifting, there's a lot of things to, to have to prove. Trespassing is, you've been told not to be there and we got a picture of you standing at the meat counter. It's that easy. So they are very aggressive about using trespassing as a deterrent to keep their known shoplifters out of the, the property. There's also other alternatives to someone like Walmart with regard to civil damages, where they sue, not through the municipal court, but they sue through the county court to collect for the, the insult, for lack of a better word, of shoplifting. Uh, at the municipal court level, our first priority is to make the merchant whole. So if there was sixty-eight dollars worth of matters shoplifted, that will be the first thing that we're gonna see too, is that as part of the sentencing alternative, restitution to the agency is very, very important. And then we try different ways of handling probation. We don't have a probation department as such, but we have means of creating deterrents that if you are arrested for shoplifting in this jurisdiction, again, these are the consequences that will occur to you. So to some extent, that works. Uh, at least at my level, I don't see a lot of the same person, uh, doing a lot of shoplifting. But you'd be surprised at some of our citizens, uh, who we might characterize as pillars of the community that have been caught shoplifting. It's just everywhere in our society. It's sad, but we're trying as best we can to create deterrents to keep them from doing that. And that's a never-ending struggle. Walmart though, they're on top of it as much as anyone. Probably ninety percent of the shoplifting that I see anyway comes right out of Walmart.
I agree.
I'd like to add. Go ahead. To, uh, Mr. Maloff, talking about the trespass there. Two years ago, uh, that could be a felony when they did, went back into there. And then legislation decided to change it to a misdemeanor for that. Unless there was enough charges with amount they stole, something like that. Before, we catch them back in there just by the criminal trespass, it was a felony and now it no, no longer is. It still doesn't stop us from making arrests and stuff. It, it was a little more to deter them. I don't, you have any insight on the way to change that?
I'm not gonna comment until I drive out of the state because they, they may be looking for me.
Does the, does the fine increase if you've been caught multiple times or how does that work?
Both on a practical level and, and there are certain code violations where the actual code provisions call for a first offense, second offense, third offense. And there's an upgrade of fines and so forth as that occurs. As a practical matter, Judge Manley, or if he sees a repeat offender, he's entitled to consider that. Uh, the municipal court through its clerk helps us, both myself in the pre-trial phase and Mr. Manley in the trial phase, telling us if we've got repeat offenders. So we're aware of it and yes, that does have an effect on what we do with regard to sentencing.
Thank you. This one's a little bit hard to read. Uh, I'm not saying you have to have great penmanship, but I'm, I, I got older eyes. Um, can we have live video cameras to be put on the pavilion by the pond? There has been vandalism at the city park.
Um, there are actually three cameras there that we can monitor. Uh, parks have put them in. Uh, we can go back. There are vigilons, correct, Paul?
I, I'm not sure.
I, I think they are. But anyway, so they're, they're decent cameras. We can go back and pull the video. It just happens to be as it's covering. They're not, they don't scan or anything. They're pointed in certain directions, the skate park, uh, the bathrooms, whatever, uh, Mr. Hinkhouse thought needed the most protection.
And that also goes along with budget. And if we have the money to, to put that camera system out there, uh, because they do cost quite a bit of money. Um, and then it says, so there, is there a noise ordinance in place in La Jolla? It can be enforced and ticket's given. Um, there are cars going through the city park with loud mufflers popping and also people driving with their windows down and constantly playing rap music. The park should be a place of peace and quiet. A car club met Sunday evening. Um, I'm guessing they were loud, so whoever wants to take that over.
I want to legalize it, but let me start by saying, we have a noise ordinance that's on the books. And it talks in the context of decibels. And the problem with enforcement is, we may hear a, a loud vehicle, but as that vehicle drives away, that evidence of violation drives with it. So, holding and capturing a violation is, as a practical matter, impossible. If a citizen hears something of loudness and they file a complaint, willing to put their signature on a summons and complaint, and then willing to come into court and tell the judge what they heard, it's at least theoretically possible that that's enough evidence to sustain a conviction. But asking the police department to show up and write a summons because someone complained about a loud radio where the officer doesn't hear it, that's an impossible task. That's just not enforcement. While, all, and while we're capturing that, let me just comment, same thing with fireworks. Uh, we know that there's fireworks going on down the street, but we can't expect that the police department's gonna be able to write a summons for someone shooting off fireworks when they haven't seen it themselves. So if there's violations, noise primarily, but fireworks also, it's up to the citizenry to be able to raise their hand and say, I'm, I'm willing to sign the summons and complaint. And then I'm willing to go tell the story in front of the municipal judge. We can get enforcement there, but without that component, it's, it's an impossible task.
And so if anyone has any questions, make sure you get them to Paula or Bill. If you're watching on Facebook, you can type the question in the comment. I will answer those as I see them coming through. Um, I did have another one that came that said, what are we doing about people on motorcycles speeding through town? Uh, we've seen multiple people speeding on motorcycles through town and it seems as nothing is being done.
Do you want to talk about the LiDAR?
Sure. So, um, a couple of things, I guess, to clarify, and it probably doesn't clarify your question. Are they talking about on Highway fifty coming through town? Are they talking about in town?
I'm guessing in town.
Okay.
I've heard it, but I, I don't know where it's at, where it's going through.
So I'll address kind of both. Um, on Highway fifty, we do get some traffic that rolls through and we do some enforcement out there. Um, in the city, we're doing enforcement as well. We just graciously were able to obtain a, a LiDAR unit that was donated to the police department. And a LiDAR is a handheld radar unit that is very effective for, in kind of a closed environment like we are in the city. Um, radar units, without going into a lot of boring detail, they kind of put a band out and, and they can put out a wider band. So you have to be careful with a vehicle, how you clock, where you clock, what's behind it, what's in front of it. Um, that's the layman's term, but I won't go into the whole process of that. But, so it's a little bit more difficult sometimes, especially in moving traffic. You gotta be really on your game about what you're doing. With a LiDAR unit, it focuses that in a little bit better and it's more accurate, so you have a better idea. So working in our city traffic, it provides us a little bit better opportunity to use that unit. It's also not attached to a car. So the officer can be parked parallel, can be parked in different locations, as long as you have line of sight for the vehicles you're targeting. So we've just got this in the last couple of months. I have officers going to training to get, uh, recertified on this. Um, and we hope to really utilize that piece of equipment, um, in a significant way here over the next months to, two years to come. It's a very valuable tool that we felt we really needed and gracious to, uh, to the donation that was provided to the police department for, for the ability to use that piece of equipment. Um, that's one. And again, it's just an education for officers, a reminder to them, when you're not doing something else, focus on traffic, focus on the things that are making our city unsafe. And continue redirecting our officers into traffic is important. I'm an old traffic guy, so traffic to me is near and dear to my heart. Um, and just that reminder to them to continue to, you find good things in traffic. There are people that drive around and have all kinds of things, violations and felonies. And it's a great place to start and work when you're not doing something else. So a redirection on our part is important. We, we have some ownership in that to make sure we're doing that. And coupled with the equipment that we've been provided, that I think will make a great, uh, opportunity coming forward. That's what I ask you to hold us accountable to as we move forward. You see some better results with the equipment that we've been provided.
I, I think the biggest thing in my opinion on that is, you know, sometimes it's, it's horrible to get a ticket. And my wife has a heavy right foot, so, um, I know firsthand. But we just don't want to see something bad happen, uh, with one, especially with one of these. It's sometimes younger kids on these motorcycles, you know? They're, they're barely learning to drive and they're going at high speeds thinking they're invincible. Uh, I'd rather them get a ticket than to, you know, wake up that we, we lost one of them because they just think they could speed throughout the town. Anything you wanted to add?
I'd like to add, yeah, on that too, uh, not an excuse, but an explanation. So last year, we handled twenty-two thousand calls per service. With two people on, officers can get split up. You know, have to handle, each handle, handle their own call. We've got two issues with that. Number one, it's an officer safety issue. Number two, it's a citizen safety issue because they may not be able to protect that citizen there by themselves. So having some more help with that would, would help, uh, there. Uh, I've seen stuff in the last couple of years that I haven't seen in my whole career. And I don't know if it's just because we have CAD now where you can see it. But I'll see sometimes we have calls backed up seven or eight deep. And that used to be a very unusual thing. But compared to Pueblo, uh, I have a son-in-law that works for Pueblo PD. He comes to work, he's fifteen to twenty calls down. Uh, when he leaves that day, at the end of shift, he's fifteen to twenty. So we're starting to see a little of that. So having some more could help us, you know, uh, handle those problems. We can always ask the SO to come, but they also have a big county, they should be out patrolling. And they're handling crimes of their own. So if it's something serious, they'll, they'll usually get there and help us. But sometimes that may take time. So that, that's kind, sometimes the reason we don't get to the traffic and noise violations and some of those other things. But there are times when we do have downtime, the deputy chief's making sure they'll be utilizing that time to, to work on those.
I know I have two former state patrol officers in here. Do, are they allowed to, to come into city limits and, and make stops? How does that work? How does that work?
Yep. We actually utilized, just this last weekend, we utilized a couple of troopers and our officers to work Adams, both in the city and the county, and we addressed some traffic complaints that we had out there, as well as some bus complaints, school starting. So we were able to utilize them. The sheriff's office comes and works with us from time to time as well. We have a couple of operations planned through this year to target the bus stops where we know we have issues, and we have people running those bus signs on the school buses who are trying to load and offload kids. So yes, to answer that, and they do come in, and we do a lot of DUI impaired enforcement with the, with the State Patrol and with the county when they have time to play. I do want to point something on our stats. The 2022 stat, that's, that's the whole year, and so the 23 stat is year-to-date. We have some ground to make up in the next four months, but I hate to have you all walk out the door thinking we're really that far behind. We're, we're on target, but we do have some, some ground to make up here, I think. But just to point that out in case that was a question, so there's my.
Here comes a question I was expecting. It was mentioned at a previous meeting that the LJPD's hands are tied with regard to drug charges and other charges. Please explain more about what this means. Does legislative funding mean state-level?
Drug enforcement is, is very problematic. First, we don't have municipal code provisions that discern drug misuse or drug manufacture, sale, dispersing. So that becomes protected or non-protected actions under state law. If there's a violation under state law, there's a whole separate process that is, they start at the local level with the police department writing or catching the individual and then filling out reports. But it goes then to the district attorney's office, and if there's enforcement issues, it's enforced at the state level. Very problematic because there are not discernible boundaries for what is an addiction problem, what is a mental health problem, what is an illegal exercise to, to make money and violate the law. All of those are things that other people get to deal with. It starts with local identification and local intervention, but it very rapidly leaves our control and is then left with the state.
There used to be a drug task force. Is that still something we have with the PD?
It went away in 2010, and it would be the, the most awesome thing if we could find funding and bring that back, resources. We had a full-time guy that did nothing but worked drugs, and then each department would give him somebody to help with them. One of the big things I'd like to say too on the drug problem, we need the community's help. We need you to tell us what you see, and unfortunately, be willing to, you know, put in the paper and sign on it. We can still get them, but we've got to have the community help us. We can't be everywhere at once. You hear how, how many numbers we have, we're handling other calls, but if we get a tip on something with drugs, we're trying to work it.
Is that one that can be anonymous, or do you have to have?
It can be anonymous. Anonymous, it may help us, but to, to end this problem, we need the community.
It needs to be a statement.
And one of the things, we had Citizen Academy the other night and listened to some, some of the younger people. They were talking about neighborhood watches. That would help with that. Well, you have the attitude of a, a lot of people, younger, they're saying, you know, it's not my problem, not my concern. They don't, you know, want to get involved in their communities and say what's happening, things like that. So if we can get people to step up, be the eyes and ears for us, because we can't be anywhere, right, or be everywhere, write stuff down and let us know, and I think we could make a difference.
Just a couple of quick ads to this. So I, I will echo the chief that it takes all of us, right? We can't ticket or arrest our way out of drug problems. It takes the community to decide we want to address the issue together. There are some things that we've done in the police department that I think are going to have some value to this. Oh, my, out of the camera. Sorry, I knew I was going to do that to you. Better? Oh, we've sent an officer to Desert Snow. Some of you in the room know Desert Snow is a highway interdiction class, but it's very practical education for in a city as well. It's searching vehicles where you find them for contraband and, and resources, but the education that comes with that for the officer is very valuable. So we've sent an officer to that. He's come back, he's utilizing that training here in the city, he's training our other officers in that. We have plans to put an ARID class together, which is an impaired driver class, a little bit step up from what the officers get through their basic training, not quite into a full, full drug recognition, but they all tie together. Traffic, driving cars, impaired drivers, people under the influence, because we're a mobile society, they all have a nexus together. So as our officers become better and they learn better skill sets in the upfront investigation, and a lot of times it comes through cars or stops in a home, or they're on a service call somewhere else, that ability to recognize what they're seeing and, and become smarter at that are some of the things that we're doing. We've taken some steps to accomplish that. We have some more training coming up for our officers to get through in this next six, eight months. And then it's, it's a matter of, oh, we have K-Nite program too. I don't know if we're going to talk about that, but we're looking at putting our dog back to, to work. We're already doing K-Nite searches through the school that's been very valuable for us. So we're trying to do some proactive things that way to accomplish this, but it's, I think it's twofold. It's the community awareness, absolutely, the community helping step it up. And then it ties back to the detective position. The ability to do follow-up on complicated drug cases or complicated investigations is really important. Street officers have time to go get their calls done, and as the chief said earlier, we're stacking calls. They don't have time to work anything that's extra or that they may have picked up the night before or two days ago. The ability to have an officer to be able to do follow-ups, continued investigation in these more complex cases, ties us back together, I think, in, in a way that will be very meaningful for us as a community, and start to see some results out of some of these things we'll put together.
I'm glad the deputy chief brought up Desert Snow. The officer that went to it spoke so highly of it, and it is a nationally-known class. So our training region is going to bring it here to Otero County to have. So we'll be getting officers from Bent, Otero, Lamar, Powers, all around us, starting to be trained in that. So it's got to do nothing but help.
Training is huge, and we have one of the best training facilities and, you know, just all-around group out there, so thank you guys for that. Back to the drugs real quick. Okay, so we're all clear, because I've, I've heard a bunch of different things. Different drugs are able to be possessed right now without it being a crime, correct? Like a certain amount, you can have a certain amount of certain drugs, and that's not a crime. But selling drugs is still illegal. So if you are able to catch them selling drugs, that's still a crime. That is still a crime. But possession, if, if you see someone, you know, with, you'd have to know that it was a drug, but they can possess a certain amount of drugs, is that correct?
Under four ounces of certain felony drugs they can have, and it's not a felony.
Yeah. But is it still a misdemeanor? Is it still a crime?
Still a misdemeanor.
Okay, so, so if you know that they have drugs on them, you get a call that these people, they can be, be stopped, questioned, and arrested if someone's willing to, to do that?
Sign or if we see it, catch them with it, yeah.
Okay. Now, once that happens, they go, they can get released that same day, though, if it's a misdemeanor, on what we call a PR bond. Is that correct?
That's up to the judge. Maybe I'll let Dean handle that part. It's kind of out of our way.
When, depending on the offense, when the summons is issued, that's one way of doing it, when there's notification to the defendant that they violated law, they are required to appear in front of a judge. Some offenses are automatic release kinds of things. Some offenses are, we're going to make you sit and sober up before we're going to release you. There are some offenses where there is a required posting of bail. That's a difficult thing, and I don't want to get into the national debate about bailless kinds of crime, but as a practical matter, Otero County does not have the facility to hold people for very long. So the judges are, their hands are tied, they've got to come up with something to ensure that the person will show back up in court, and that typically means posting, posting bail. And it's generally effective in making them appear back in court. It's hardly effective in terms of a deterrent to keeping people from violating the law.
But my point is, you guys could do your job and arrest these people for these crimes, and they could still be out the next day, and the public doesn't know that they've already been talked to.
Presumption of innocence until proven guilty.
Please explain what steps and actions LJPD would take for calls for people experiencing homelessness, mental health crises, or drug crises? Are there, oh, that's a different question. What are, what resources are available for those in mental health crisis and drug crisis?
Yeah. So quite a few years back, we started bringing crisis intervention team training into our area, and most of the officers here are trained. The only reason they're not all trained currently at this time is just being able to get the classes here. So they're trained to recognize people in those types of crises. We have a crisis responder that actually responds out with our officers, so maybe it's, you know, it's not a crime, it is what you're talking about, mental health or something, he can help handle that, so they don't have to be arrested. And then we have Valleywide Mental Health Services now that are places that can get them help. Anything else?
No, just, there's a few other resources that we can use depending on the situation, but I, I will echo that Valleywide and our co-responder program is really a neat opportunity to address whether it is a mental health issue, or it's a drug issue, or it's a combination of both, or they're just, they just need assistance. There's other resources. We use some in the room. We use the resource center significantly for different types of situations. We have great partners in, in our area and in this community. For the small community we're in, I have been just impressed and overwhelmed with the amount of resources that we can try to bring to bear with limited amount of, of money and, and staff that we all have and our whole community experiences. So great programs. I would encourage people to continue to educate themselves on what they are and understand how they link together and how valuable these programs are to address these issues specifically. Just more tools in our bag. We're no longer just arresting a person because we don't know what else to do with them. We have different opportunities now to address specific needs through these programs.
And that's another thing that I want to point out with our officers. Before, you know, officers were police officers. Now we're asking them to be, you know, therapists and work on, you know, drug training and all this other extra stuff. First responders, they have to do so much in order to be just a police officer, but the pay really hasn't gone up for them either. So, you know, we have to think about that. At some point, if we want them to be all these things, we're going to have to pay them more, because if we can't do it, they're going to go to another agency that can pay them more. Is that correct?
Yes.
I had a question online come through, and it was back to the traffic thing. So Scott, you might be up for this one. I don't know the idea, I know this idea costs money, but what do you think about putting speed bumps around school zones, including the college area too? This would help the speeding in the areas around children. Just a suggestion.
So I might stay seated, because it might be better, safer. It can be done, and jurisdictions do it all over. There is cost and the outlay of the engineering. Some of you in the room probably have dealt with this as much or not, or as more than I have, but you have to have all the engineering studies, traffic studies done, the liability risk for the city by simply putting a piece of pavement or a, a non-permanent barrier there. You have to go through all of that process, and you find some of the liability things the city studies. Can be done, they are effective, but they're only as good as people will pay attention to them. How many of you see the person try to drive around up through the sidewalk and around the side? So they, they do find ways to try to roll around them.
The other issue is snow plows too, right?
Can't plow through them, that's correct. And then they build up ice and they dam water. There's a lot of issues that you really need to think through, and the engineering of them is, is pretty important to pay attention to. And this is the significant cost. Who pays for that? Does our community pay for that? Does the school pay for that?
Do all the tickets you issue pay for that?
Who pays for that, right? So you just don't know. So it's a, it's not just as easy as put a pad out there and make it a speed bump. You have quite a bit of process that goes through.
What is the procedure for filing a trespassing summons from someone entering or re-entering stores? I'm guessing this is back to the shoplifting thing.
Go ahead, if you want to.
Okay. So that, that process, if they've already been proven that they've been trespassed is what we would call it, the, the store owner, the facility has said this person's no longer able to be here, they've been properly served, it's typically in writing, so they have a written document that says you cannot return. That makes that pretty easy, as long as you can identify it's the same person that was served, and you have the documentation to support it. That, that charge is pretty easy to file, and it's processed through the system depending now, it's been reduced to a, as the chief talked about earlier, whether that goes into a, which court system that would go into.
Do they go to the PD? Do they go to the courthouse? How do they do that?
No, the, the police officer would, would respond and can charge him with trespassing if, if we have all the documentation together.
And it may be a summons for release, or it might be available to pick.
And then I missed this one earlier. Are there any ordinances on loitering?
Me? On lawyering? Lawyer?
You'd be guilty if it was on loitering.
A really troublesome area of the law. The United States Supreme Court has been very lenient in their definition of what's loitering and to what extreme the towns and municipalities came and forced to leave. And for the most part, the answer is, we're not getting the support legislatively to be able to enforce much of that. It's, it's complicated, but this right to travel, that's, oh gosh, go back to constitutional law 101. Supposedly, within the constitution, there's implied right to travel, and that right includes being able to walk across the street, to stand on a street corner, to do this or that at your leisure, and so that makes that particular area of the law almost nonexistent in the sense of criminal prosecution.
Dean, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was looking it up in MuniCode a few weeks ago, and it's, only thing I found in there for loitering was on school grounds.
Which is somewhat of a different issue because of safety of the children.
Yeah. But it didn't talk about it in anywhere else since.
That's interesting. It's always kind of trouble for loitering at Sonic, right? Here's one I have for you, chief. Can you explain the relationship between the PD and CBI, when they get involved, and how that relationship works?
Sure. CBI is an awesome resource. Both the deputy chief and I know the agent in charge in Pueblo very well, known her for years. So if it's a serious enough crime that we need some extra help and expertise that they have, simple as a phone call, and Jody starts sending her people here. So like when we have homicides, it, what was a, a smaller one that you was going to help with the other day?
So we had, the big, big ones. Everything to include, we had, well, not just our own agency, but agencies around us, so they respond to all of us in the valley. Recently, you probably saw the news with Rocky IV. They, they had a heavy hand in helping Rocky IV do some investigation. With us, we have some solicitation things going on that we've been investigating. They've been tremendous in their sex crimes unit out of Denver to provide resources and guidance and direction for our officers that are doing the upfront investigation on some things that we suspect are going on potentially in our community. So they, they not only provide upfront for the big homicides, but all kinds of issues. They're just a tremendous resource for small agencies. That's really their charter. That's what they focus on across Colorado, providing resources for smaller agencies that can't afford to do their own.
But, but we are on their time, right? When we ask for their help?
Sometimes it takes a little time to get here, but they do their best to get here within an hour or two.
Because they are servicing so many other, other.
Yes, yeah, they don't just have this area. They go clear over to the Montevista area and everywhere else, but they, they have a widespread area.
Because on the bigger crimes, we, we take hits for why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that? A lot of times, we've handed a lot of that over to CBI to help us out, and we're waiting for them, right?
Yes.
They may be bringing agents out of Fort Collins and Denver to come to our homicide because they're also working one in the San Luis Valley at the same time. So it's not uncommon. In my years in the patrol, we assisted them significantly in upfront investigations, trying to make sure they got resources where they needed to be, because they are spread so thin across the state.
And this question is for any of you. What do you feel is the biggest threat to our community right now?
By comparison, City of La Junta to our neighbors, to our sister cities, and I'm not trying to patronize the gentleman to the left and right of me and the lady, we are not trying to patronize the gentleman to the left and right of me and the lady, we are by far more successful, more streamlined, more professional, more able to deal with the problems of protecting our citizenry than any of our neighbors or our sister communities. But I think that the biggest problem is, is the, perhaps the safe harbor that we feel that we're in, and not recognizing that the positive results that we've sustained are as a result of a lot of hard work, but there are limits to what these existing officers can do, and with resources spread so thin, that there are limits to just how safe they can make our community. I think the biggest problem is that, as in everything, it takes dollars to make the machine work, and it takes more dollars to make it work better. So, I think if there's a problem, it's the lackadaisical belief that all of this just happens, and that there's not a cost to it. There's a tremendous cost, and I commend law enforcement for what they've done locally. Just to prove a point here, the issue of training and equipment for the officers is may not be very important to me, but I bet you it's real important to the officers that are on the street. And there's just not enough dollars to facilitate that. Well, city management, Chief Quick, Acting or Assistant Chief, all got together and came up with an idea of, well, let's increase certain fines that are imposed upon violators of the system. Not taxpayers as such, but system violators having to pay a little bit more, and using that money very specifically in a fund for training and equipment for its officers. That's trying to find a solution that doesn't necessarily hit the taxpayer right in the eye. It's trying to find a way to keep our officers well-trained and fully equipped. And that's never going to be cheaper, it's always going to be harder and harder and harder. We were one of the first to have these little cameras that the officers carry about their breasts and watch what's going on and so forth, and we had that before lots of other people did. And that's very expensive technology, and we're not finding that those things are just laying on the street and can be picked up easily. So, I think the biggest challenge is getting the citizenry to appreciate that the finer things in life, such as protection of your home and yourself, come at a cost, and unfortunately, that's dollars and cents.
I'll add to that apathy on all sides, right? Apathy from our citizens in the way they drive around our community, the way they interact with each other, the idea that it can't happen here, it won't happen here, are concerning, right? We want to make sure we're always paying attention, we're always looking out for each other in our community. Apathy on the side of law enforcement, to be sure that we're always prepared, we're ready to do what we need to do, so we don't lull ourselves into a problem, or into a spot where we start to forget. I'll use stop signs as a great example in our community. We've developed an apathy as a community to roll up and roll a stop sign. That leads into other things. You do that at a four-way intersection, you might get away with that a few times. You do that at a two-way stop where they're not paying attention, or the motorcycle's running fast the other way and he runs them. We start to get these things that happen. So, a couple which you're talking about, which is really important, with just the easy thing to be apathetic about what we do, because we do live in a small community, and we do live close to our neighbors, we know each other, we know all about each other, but the tendency to let things start to slide and slip as a community start to cause us trouble that lead to bigger problems and lead to somebody getting hurt.
I would just add in, one of the things that I feel make those big things that we're worried about a little less is our mutually agreements with, you know, all the surrounding law enforcement officers. Pueblo SWAT, if we ever need a SWAT, we have all those agreements in place. If something big is, we know is going to happen or to prevent, we can bring people in, we help each other. So, we go help them if they need it, and vice versa. So, just sharing resources and helping each other out, because there's a lot more numbers putting everybody together than each of our small departments.
Absolutely. And I'll just say a quick word on this too. I had a woman come up at our last town hall, and she said she wants to take our city back. I believe that has a lot to do with apathy, I think that has a lot to do with, if you see something, say something, right? That has to come back, and we can't be afraid to say something when we see a wrong being done. We can't be afraid to sign our name to those papers, because this is our city, right? And if we're not going to fight for it, no one else is going to come in and do that for us. The other thing I want to hit on is, we have to keep our reserve force, and we have to build that reserve force, because if we can build a strong reserve force, that's worth its weight in gold. And if you want to just speak a little bit to about our reserve force, the history, and what we need to do if you want to join that.
Sure. I'm going to ask Bob Bins for a little help on this too. What year did the reserves start, Bob? 19...
Was it 59?
Yeah, I think 59.
59? So, that's, we were one, or the first reserve in the state of Colorado, and that tradition has just kind of carried on. That's how I got started in law enforcement, a lot of people got started, they're starting in law enforcement, they're reserves. I believe a lieutenant colonel for the State Patrol started here in Lahana as a reserve officer. There's chiefs and sheriffs that started as reserve officers. So, on how to build this force, currently, we have about five or six acting. And it's a little tougher, because it is a commitment, and there is some liability if, you know, things go wrong, but we have ways to help with that. But if somebody's interested in police work, but they want to just do it to help us out as a reserve, first thing they can do is come do some ride-alongs with the officers. That's what I did, see if that's something that really even interests you, because we can find other ways for you to give to the community, besides putting on a uniform and helping them. But if you want to, then we have to go through a testing process with them, background, to make sure that they're eligible, because they do become a Colorado-certified reserve police officer. So, that has to happen. And in order to do that, we put on an academy, and we just finished one last June, and it started in the end of February. So, about four to five months, depending on how much we condense it. So, four to five months of training at that time, and then willingness for ongoing training throughout the rest of their career as reserves. The state of Colorado requires that all police officers get 24 hours of continuing education in certain areas every year. Well, that's, to me, is not enough. We try to at least double that, because a lot of it can be done online, a lot of it's done in-house, so it's a good thing. So, they have to be willing to do that too, and just get with us. If we can get four or five people like we did last time that want to do it, we're running an academy.
Can city attorneys be in the reserves?
You want it to be done right, you don't want to be helping.
If someone was interested in doing a ride-along, do they just contact you, do they contact dispatch? What does that look like?
So, on duty, so.
Any one of them?
Yeah.
And what can actually be done in a ride-along? So, just so people don't get the wrong, wrong idea of what that's going to do.
So, the main thing you're going to do is just ride in a reserve, probably most of, or ride in an observe, probably most of the time, you're not even going to be able to get out of the car, but there will be some things you can get out and walk around, like if they're going around just checking the perimeter of a building or something like that. Traffic stops, you know, you'll be able to see what's happening, but you're not going to be able to walk up to the car and stuff like that, but they can get a good idea. Mr. Roberson there got to do a ride-along quite a while back, and I don't know if you want to give me an idea of what you saw on that ride-along, or what you could do as a ride-along, so.
I thought I was a speeder until I got in with the police, and then from going from one side of down to the other, and then they reported some of the, some of the calls that they got made were, they thought distractions for stuff that was actually occurring across town. It was crazy. It's crazy.
What day did you do yours?
It was Sunday. Five and six, right? It wasn't on a Sunday though, and it was still pretty busy?
Yeah.
So, imagine that on a Friday night, or a Saturday night, what these guys have to deal with, with the staff that they have. And I'm going to add one more thing. This book of codes and ordinances, you may not like all of these ordinances in here, but that's the way they are, right? We can't go around willfully breaking ordinances that we don't agree with because we don't like them. That's more work on them that they already are behind on, right? Just because you don't like something that's in here, doesn't mean you have the right to not follow those ordinances. Do you guys agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
Can I make one more statement?
No.
The one thing that was, one thing that was a surprise to me in doing that, is you're babysitting so much.
Yeah.
Just the family squabbles that are going on that you have to get involved in, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how much of that particularly takes up your, it's not, it's not dealing with crime per se, it's dealing with family situations, or I can only imagine on a Saturday, Friday and Saturday night, how much involved liquor and all the other stuff. I'm way past all that, but I can imagine, you know, I, it's just the, things have changed so much today, and what you guys are required to do, then, what you're required because of the responsibilities and the liability of the city, and just like, say, having to be involved in petty things instead of taking care of the bigger things, so.
And just to add on to that with Randall, Phil Weiser was here just a couple months ago now, and he was saying that there was, you know, when a family has a domestic violence issue and there's kids in the home, that there's some kind of program where it notifies the school to kind of like take it easy on that kid for the day. Is that something we do here?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, they don't give them the details the way I understand it, if everything happened, just, you know, some stuff happened, make sure that we're watching this kid. Can you tell us a little bit about our SRO, and how that program works out for us?
That's another awesome program. I wish the schools in the city could afford to keep one in each school, but it is a partially-funded police officer position, that's partially funded by the school and then by the police department. So, our current SRO is Naomi Martinez. Her daily job is to go up there, monitor things, think about safety that she needs to train, like evacuations of the building. She's kind of in charge of the safety of the school, working with the school. Sometimes she turns into a counselor with kids. Sometimes she's having to arrest the kids. Just, she does numerous things, goes to football, being just out there for the kids to talk to if they need to as well, not just there as an authority here, but like a counselor. What else? Just lots of, lots of jobs that she does.
We've had a lot of great SROs, I would say.
Yes, we have.
And, you know, that's built a big trust within the police, with all of you, just so you're not just police officers, you're people too.
She's an excellent recruiter for us for kids coming out of high school that are not sure what to do, and they think they may want to be in law enforcement. She's ideal in helping to recruit and kind of mentor kids along into different professions, whether that's fire service, or law enforcement, or military. She's had quite a few conversations with kids in the last year.
And you might add to let her know that if they act up, then Dean's going to make them write a book report, and that occurred a lot. All right, so, if I don't have any other questions, I will give you all a chance for a last word here, and then we will be done for this evening.
I would just say for us, it's accountability back, right? I've had conversations with several of you in this room, and several in our community about the follow-up and the accountability our police department has to our citizens. And if we're missing the boat in those things, or we're not following up in a prompt time, please reach out, reach out to me, reach out to the chief, make sure we're staying accountable to our contract with our citizens. That's important, that we can't be separate from each other, we have to be together. We have to be able to communicate effectively, so never hesitate. If we're not getting it done, you're never going to offend me, to reach out and say we missed the boat, and we need something better or more from you. It helps us know, it helps us grow, and it helps us become better, more responsive to your needs and to our community, and that's ultimately what our goal and our objective should be.
And I just want to say too, you know, we believe that we do work for the citizens of Lahana, you know, we're here to protect them, but I like to go back to Sir Robert Pyle, from back in, I believe, the 1870s, who was...
I was here for that.
He was? Yeah. So, he says something, and I've read it a couple times in council, but it really means a lot to me, and gives you something to think about. "The police are the public, the public are the police. The police are paid to give full-time attention to duties that are incumbent on every citizen in the interest of community welfare and existence." So, something, pretty smart man even back then, and it still carries through to today.
I almost let you have those last words, but we got another question. So, I'll have this one be, and this kind of ties in, we don't actually have anything officer-wise with Otero College, do we? They have their own security, right?
Yeah, they have their own security.
They have their own security. But they says, "There's a lot of speeding vehicles between 14th and 18th on Santa Fe Avenue, especially south to north from Otero campus. Speed limit signs would be nice." Okay. I will add that I'm on San Juan, we have speed limit signs, and they're still speeding. So, I don't know if that's the ultimate answer, but do we do any outreach with the college when they come in to, you say, hey, you know, this, these are kind of the layout of the town and stuff like that?
Yeah, every year, an officer does a welcome and then talks to them about, you know, how to act, things like that. Some things we can do to those areas, if they let the deputy chief or myself know, we have a radar trailer. We can set that up for a while, and some people just see how fast they can make it go, but after it's there for a while, we can run some enforcement behind it. Do some education first, and then if it continues, then take it, so.
Yeah, we have other options too. We have a great partnership with the college, specifically Gary Addington and his new role, and a lot of dialogue back and forth, so as we have these issues come up, we'll try this from both sides, and enforcement side and education side from us, but through the college, they have a significant amount of leverage over the students and the ability to get their attention in a whole different direction than we do. And so, we utilize that partnership quite a bit back and forth, and we have ongoing dialogue with the college back and forth about how to make that safer in and around the campus, and specifically in the community.
I guess this last question would be for Dean, I don't really understand it all the way. Do we have G5 towers in Lahana?
Do we have them?
My phone says we do.
But I don't know if it's correct. Who is that?
If your phone says 5G, then you have it. I haven't seen 5G in Lahana yet.
It shows on here, but that...
There's a true 5G, does it light up? So, then you do have it.
Okay. I'd like to comment on something if I could, before we close down.
Absolutely, you get the last word. You're the last one here, you get the last word.
I don't want to be the last, last word, but I want to, I have two things, two points I'd like to make. I actually did a ride-along with one of the officers, and it was like 2:00 in the morning. We were over by Second and Ratone. I'm listening to the radio. The officer's window is cracked about like this, and we're jabbering back and forth, and all of a sudden, the officer hits the brakes and jumps out of the car, and I don't even know what the heck's going on. He had observed or heard that there was some mischief going on in the parking lot where all those cars were stored, and he caught some kids that were breaking into the cars and vandalizing. Now, from my point of view, that is a compelling story of just how well-trained these officers are, that I never heard a thing, I never saw anything, I'm jabbering, I'm listening to the radio, that this guy is working the whole time, and he was aware of and caught and knew that there was things going on there. It was just a remarkable experience. But I mean this with all sincerity. I represent a lot of communities up and down the area, and I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you. You don't know how good you've got this police department in protecting you. They are terrific, they are trained. More is better, I'm not saying that they, they act me of life here, they could use more money and more resources and more officers and so forth, but we should be very proud of what these gentlemen have put together and how they protect us. It's a great thing that's been done, and thank God for that. Thank you.
What part of the budget is the police in again?
I'm not a numbers guy.
What fund?
Oh, general fund.
General fund.
General fund.
So, I want everyone to think about that.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, 1% funds these guys, okay? And the less that's, you know, we have in there, it makes it hard on them. So, I don't want you guys just to think about all the nice amenities that the 1% brings you. I also want you to think about our men and women serving us for our safety every day, that plays a big role in that. If we want to grow this force, we got to find ways to fund them. And all this great stuff they do with their training and finding these grants is wonderful, but when those grants are gone, we have to find ways to keep that going. So, don't just think about all those things when, like golf course, all that stuff's important, but you guys protecting us each and every day, having a safe community to be in, that's equally, if not even more important to me anyway. So, thank you guys for putting your lives on the line for us, and you guys always have a supporter in me.